Good evening, everyone, and welcome. May I -- I'm going to ask our district clerk to lead us in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. May I have a motion, please, that the agenda of May 6, 2014 be approved? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. And we now have our annual budget hearing. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As set by statute, it is now time for holding the hearing and information meeting for the 2014-2015 budget propositions of the Penfield Central School District. My name is Carol Nasra, and I'm president of the Penfield Central School District Board of Education. The vote on the budget and for members of the Board of Education is in two weeks and not at this meeting. The polls will be open on Tuesday, May 20, 2014, in the high school gym from 6:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. The district has continued extended voting hours to make it more convenient for the residents to vote. Notice of the meeting, hearing, and vote has been duly published according to law in the Penfield Post and the Daily Record. Affidavits will be filed with the minutes of the meeting. It is customary, however, to read the summary of the notice of meeting. Here is the summary. Notice is hereby given that an election will be held here at the Penfield High School in two weeks, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., where unqualified voters of the district may vote concerning the election of two members of the Board of Education, one budgetary proposition, and bus purchase proposition as follows. The election of two members to the Board of Education. Camille Rutan and Karen Wilson currently hold these seats. The candidates running to fill these seats are James Barton, Lisa Benati-Chidzie, James Gorski, and Camille Rutan. The budgetary proposition is as follows. Proposition number one pertains to the appropriation of the necessary funds to meet estimated expenses for the ensuing school year 2014-2015. The proposition to be voted upon states, shall the following resolution be adopted: to adopt the annual budget of the school district for the fiscal year 2014-2015 in the amount of $89,174,836, and to authorize the requisite portion thereof to be raised by taxation on the taxable property of the district. Proposition number two pertains to the purchase of four 66-passenger-type school buses and three 28-passenger-type school buses. The proposition to be voted upon states, shall the following resolution be adopted: resolved that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District is hereby authorized and directed to purchase four 66-passenger-type school buses and three 28-passenger-type school buses, and to expend from the capital fund therefore a sum not exceeding $634,846, which sum shall consist of a transfer from the general fund budget and a transfer of $554,846 from the school bus reserve fund, established pursuant to Section 365.1 of the education law. I have available this evening the complete notice of annual meeting and election as printed in the Daily Record and Penfield Post, and will be pleased to show it to anyone who wishes to see it tonight. We now have a budget presentation.
I'm going to start off talking about just how the financial plan of the district is a function of the educational plan. And in the Penfield School District, we do a lot of work around aligning our action plans in the building and our goals and objectives with the district-level overarching strategic goals. And these are those goals: the academic achievement in excellence, partnerships, and fiscal responsibility. So the educational plan is based on meeting those objectives, and we monitor our progress therein. And then the financial plan is created to be able to allow the buildings to achieve the actions that they put in their school improvement plans in the fall and other district-level objectives as well. You'll notice some work, some changes on the goals that are new for this year. We talk a little bit more about the whole student and academic achievement in excellence because we know there's a connection there. And also with partnerships, we are looking at partnerships, not just external with the district, but internally between buildings and among the different stakeholders within the school district. And our fiscal responsibility, looking at adequate resources supporting the academic goals and reflecting the financial values of the community. And we'll see later, just a little bit later, in our process of trying to figure out what are those financial values of the community. There's a process that we go about doing that. We are building a bright future for the children of Penfield. We have a graduation rate of 95 percent. And we are also able to allow families and children to save thousands of dollars in college tuition by being able to offer the elective courses, well, the AP courses in this case, college-level classes, and technical certifications, which translate into real dollars after graduation. Penfield High School graduates also garner hundreds of thousands of dollars. In fact, here, a class of 2013, $2.6 million. We also send approximately 90 percent of our graduates onto college, with 91 percent of them earning Regents diplomas, and 67 percent earning the advanced designation, which has a higher level of rigor and accomplishment that's required to get that designation. We have highly competitive SAT scores. We're monitoring those as well because we know those are a gateway into colleges. Also evidence of a bright future for our graduates, Penfield High School is named to Newsweek's 2013 list of best American high schools. Bay Trail Middle School continues to be designated and was recently re-designated as a 2013 essential elements school to watch. All four of our Penfield Elementary Schools ranked in the top 20 out of more than 160 schools in the Rochester area in 2013, based on four years of test scores. And a nice combination tonight, we've got our music presentation later. The district was named to the 2014 NAMM list of best communities for music education. In developing our educational plan and our financial plan, it's important to involve our stakeholders, and we've got intentional opportunities that allow that to happen. We have stakeholder committees that involve parents, staff, teachers, and administrators. And we had a budget survey that demonstrated that the community places a high value on the school district and the outstanding programs. That survey also was utilized during a conversation on education where the attendees analyzed that data and were able to identify themes and interpret the data to find out what it was specifically that the district valued. We made sure that our financial plan reflected those conclusions. Now I'll hand it over to Dr. Mark Sansouci, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Thank you. Tonight, as you know, is the district's official budget hearing. So tonight's presentation is the last of the budget presentations throughout the course of this year. We've had, as you know, we've had multiple budget presentations. At every board meeting beginning in January, we've had board meetings, at every board meeting beginning in January, we present some portion of the budget. And we work our way through it in a way that's made sense for us and for our community. The board has already adopted the budget, so tonight there would be no changes as a result of this hearing. And the board's adopted that budget in order to meet the mandated timelines of publication and notice and so forth. One of those requirements, though, one of the requirements is tonight's presentation. So this is the three-part, what's, I think, commonly called the three-part budget. It's a presentation that's done slicing the budget up in a way that's different than what we usually look at it, and in a way that often doesn't necessarily make sense to us. But it was mandated statewide a number of years ago so that districts, residents, newspapers, the state could compare districts one to another in terms of their presentation. So they forced statewide the standardization of the presentation. And also tonight, you're going to see a lot of required notices. So they are presented to you not because they're pretty or the way we would desire them, but because they're mandated in terms of the information that they convey and the presentation. Much of this, many of these, are going to be included, the notices will be included in our budget newsletter. It includes lots of other information and hopefully is also laid out in a way that's more accessible to folks. But with that, tonight, we always want to start with the year's key factors. And really, one of the things that we are pointing out as we move forward in this year's budget is that one of the key factors is certainly the tax cap. We'll talk about that as we move along. Our levy increase this year is at the cap of 2.05 percent. We are also, but also, and fortunately, the district received more state aid than we have in previous years. So we're in part balancing this budget on a 4.1 percent increase in state aid, which is about $891,000. Before I get into the required notices, I just want to remind everyone and talk a little bit about what that means to the district. It means that we, that in past years, certainly our increases have been much smaller than that. But what it also means, while we're grateful for it, and I think it's welcome and is allowing us to move forward with this budget, the thing that's missing is a focus at the state level on the gap elimination adjustment. So the way the formulas work is that a certain amount is, we are entitled by formula to a certain level of state aid. Calculations, there's multiple, over 40 different state aid calculations that goes through, and it returns an amount to which the districts should receive. Then a part of that is held back. It's deducted, it's reduced. It's a negative aid category, if you will. It's called gap elimination adjustment. It exists to close the state's budget gap. When a number of years ago, their budget was in disarray, they helped balance it by pushing their gap out into districts. They simply couldn't afford to support the level of state aid to schools that they'd committed to. To their credit, they kept the commitment, but they just said, well, we can't, we can't fund it. So for 1415, that remains, and it remains at $2.5 million for Penfield. So one of the things you'll hear about as I move through this is that the state is projecting now a surplus for the first time in many years, yet they haven't addressed this. I think as we move through this next legislative cycle, this is going to be a focus. But for now, and for tonight, we're grateful for the 4.1 percent. However, it's not quite enough to balance the budget, so we're also using some reserves: $2 million in appropriated fund balance and a total of 880 from other reserves, 130 of that from debt service fund, and $750,000 from the employees' retirement system reserve. That, along with a 2.05 percent tax levy increase, balances our budget. We've worked through this process, and we've seen and discussed, as we've moved through the process, the ways that we attempt to manage the expenditure side of our house. Reducing expenditures, controlling expenditures, is an important part of the fiscal health of our district, and we work hard at that. We've worked hard through energy efficiencies. We've had a long commitment to strategic and long-term financial planning. We try not to live in the year. We've worked, and we continue to work, to realign our collective bargaining agreements to a new reality under a tax cap. We've belonged and we continue to belong to healthcare workers' compensation consortiums to try and pool our risk and share the cost savings that can be generated by cooperating with other school districts. And we continue that in ways large and small. We participate in over 24 small things, cooperative bids, to try and leverage our buying power with all our peers. That and lots of other ways. But at the end of the day, the pressure is on our budget in terms of salary benefits, utilities, and so forth. We are asking for a $2,078,440,000 increase over this year's budget. That's a total of 2.4 percent. The way that splits out, and this is a new pie for the board, in terms of administration, capital, and program, you can see that 76 percent of our budget is program, administration, approximately 11 percent, and capital is 13 percent. You'll see more detail as to what's contained in those slices in just a bit. And in fact, here is administration. I apologize for the tiny type, but I wanted you to have the entire piece of the information. So what is considered administration and what's in that budget? Central administration, so that's the district office, if you will. Building administration, finance costs, the cost for running the district in terms of the personnel office, records retention. Central services, that's central services, special items such as insurance, BOSI's administration, curriculum development, supervision, and so forth. And we put into this piece the benefits associated with all of the personnel, the prorated share of the benefits associated with the personnel in this component of the budget. One of the things you'll see here is there's no dramatic swings in any of these categories. And in fact, that's part of this year's story. You know, in past years, we've had new initiatives. We've had significant changes. We've had new debt service, building projects, full-day kindergarten, that changed the shape of our pie. This year, really, it's a step forward in our plan. There's no significant new initiative, so you don't see major swings in any of these components. The program component of the budget, again, 76 percent of the budget, again, you don't see significant major swings, but this is the core of our operation. Classroom instruction. District transportation is included here because, by mandate, because that's what allows students to access instruction. We provide transportation, not because we want to run a bus service, but because we know, the state knows, that that's necessary to allow children to get to school to learn. Garage building comes along with that, census and the employee benefits that support it. And finally, capital. So this is the infrastructure portion of this budget, if you will, what allows us to offer the instructional program. So maintenance and operation of the plant, some other minor items such as bank fees, but then mostly the mortgage payments for our buildings. So debt service, the mortgage payments that we make are included here, as well as transfers, transfers to school lunch, transfers to our bus purchase reserve, and any other necessary capital transfers. The significant, the one significant change really in this component is you see the $150,000 reduction. In last year's budget, we'd included $150,000 as transfer to the capital project at Bay Trail for that transformer. That goes away. You can see that here. That's really the only major significant change in this portion of the budget. So that's the three components on the expenditure side. On the revenue side is simpler and it's more familiar. It's, this is, there's really not a lot of different ways to chop up revenue, and so this is what you're used to seeing. 4.1 percent in state aid. At the bottom, you see the 2.1. That's actually 2.05 percent increase in the real property tax levy. You see a slight change in payments in lieu of taxes. Really, in the middle here, you see the rest of that story. So the loss of the federal funding. We had budgeted $255,000 last year of one-time stimulus money. That's gone. We're replacing that in part with a further dip into the employee retirement system reserve, with that moving from $417,000 to $750,000. So really, the story this year on the revenue side is really a little bit of all three of our revenue streams. So we are increasing by $300,000 our dip into reserves. We are requesting an increase in the levy at 2.05 percent, and we're taking advantage of the increased state aid of $890,000 or 4.1 percent. Over the seven-year history, over the most recent seven years, we've managed a levy increase of under 2 percent. So this year's levy increase of 2.1 percent, and a tax rate increase of 1.6 percent. The levy increase being the amount of money we collect, so that's a fixed dollar amount. That's what we collect in taxes. That doesn't vary, and we're requesting, again, 2.05 percent. That's expressed as a rate, or as a, the way that gets collected is in real property taxes expressed as a rate per thousand, and that's affected, of course, by assessed valuations. We know there's growth in the community. We're estimating some growth in the community. It's not final yet, won't be final until we set the levy in August. But we know, based on what we are anticipating that growth to be, that that 2.1 percent levy should turn into a rate change of 1.6 percent. That means that if your house hasn't been reassessed, if something, if it lost an exemption, if something else hasn't changed, you'd expect to see a 1.6 percent change in your bill. We project what that looks like. So here you can see for a basic star or a senior enhanced star what those projected increases, I'm sorry, are anticipated to be. And this included, this chart's going to be included as well in our budget newsletter so people can see how it impacts them directly. Now we sort of move into the required disclosures. So one of the pieces of required disclosure tonight, and also we are required to post this, to transmit this to the State Education Department, is a list of all employees earning 120, two criteria, really, all employees with the word superintendent in their name. So that's superintendent of schools, assistant superintendent, no matter what they make, and anyone in the district who earns more than $126,000. So you see here, those positions listed, eight positions in total. A property tax report card. So this displays two, really, two pieces of information. You can see here the proposed spending budget and our proposed increase at 2.4 percent, the levy increase, and it also splits out the levy based on the tax cap. So this tells you that we are not requesting an override, that we are at or under. In fact, we are just at the tax cap. And the other pieces of information that it gives you are the change in public school enrollment and in the Consumer Price Index. Down below, you see also information on our fund balances. So the, this year's unreserved fund balance, or I should say, unappropriated fund balance, 3.9 percent. 4 percent for next year, 4 percent is the cap. We've traditionally maintained at the cap. School budget notice. This report shows what would happen in the event of a defeated budget. So the rules are this. The board is offering a budget for public approval. If it is defeated, if the budget fails, the board has two choices. They may immediately go to a contingent budget. And under the new rules, under the rules we operate under, if you adopt a contingent budget, it must be at a 0 percent tax levy increase. So the 2.05 percent or the $1.2 million that you're requesting in new revenue would go away. You would have to adopt at zero. And you would have, and you would be obligated to make cuts, whatever were necessary on the expenditure side of your budget to get to that. You can, probably wouldn't make that choice. That's one of your choices. The choice you would probably make would be to recraft your budget in some way and reoffer it. So you can do that. If you, if it passes on the second, on the second try, that's good. We move forward, it's a successful budget, and we're used to that. If it fails on the second try, there are no more second chances. You must adopt a contingent budget. It cannot contain a tax levy increase, and you are obligated to make whatever changes, reductions are necessary for that to occur. So this school budget notice talks about what that might look like. It shows the, in the leftmost column, the budget adopted, and information on this year's budget. In the middle column, the budget you're proposing. And on the far right, what the caps and what the amounts would be for a contingency budget should that come to pass. And down below, there's just some language that essentially says that this is prorated, that you can see what the changes are in administration program and capital. But you haven't made those decisions yet. That's prorated. You would have to make lots of choices to get to that, and the ultimate result might not be the way it's displayed here, but this is information made available on a prorated basis so people could understand what the impact might be. Basic star exemption impact. This is a required notice that came about as a result of basic star. The legislature thought it important for people to understand what the value to them of that exemption was, so we're all entitled to a $15,000 basic star exemption, and they wanted to remind people, as part of the budget process, that they're enjoying that. So the estimated value of the basic star savings for next year, for the 1415 budget, is $758. Not a required part of tonight's presentation, but we think it's important that people see the actual sample ballot and the budget resolutions. Ms. Nasra already read these. I'm not going to go through it again, but you can see we're requesting approval of a budget at $89,174,836. There's a second proposition for the purchase of four large buses and three 28-passenger buses at a sum not to exceed $634,846. And the sample ballot is, as you see it here, these names, I think it's, I think I feel compelled this year to say that the names and the order on the ballot is randomly selected. The names are drawn from a hat and, as witnessed, but it just so happens it's in alphabetical order this year. So when I got this from Marsha, I said, that can't be right. It's in alphabetical order. But it is, in fact, right. That's the way they came out of the hat. So James Barton, Lisa Benati-Chidzie, James Gorski, and Camille Rutan. There's a couple, we spent, Dr. Grimm and I have spent the last several days actually touring on a traveling roadshow that has had conversations and presentations at PTA meetings, at faculty meetings. We'll have a couple more during the course of this week. And these meetings are the last few before the budget vote. So May 10, there's a budget open house at the Penfield Community Center, and the superintendent will be present at Starbucks for coffee with the superintendent and lunch with the superintendent, 9 to 10 at Starbucks on May 13, 12 to 1 on the 13th. And on May 14, hosted, is a presentation to PTAs hosted by both SEPTA and the elementary school PTAs. The vote is on May 20 at the high school, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Everyone belongs in some school district. So certainly, we're talking to and most interested in the folks who are Penfield residents, and we would encourage everyone to come out and vote, to express their opinion. But folks that are hearing this that might be employees, might not live in the district, you are a resident somewhere, and we would encourage you to vote there. It's important that we exercise that privilege. We listen. It makes a difference, and I think it's important that we all take advantage of that opportunity. This presentation, the ones that have gone on before it, video clips of all of the budget presentations that have been made since January are available on the website. You can spend hours. We would also entertain any questions that people have. So there's lots of information available. We're happy to share it. The website's a good place, but a personal question's never rebuffed either. So are there any questions of the board tonight?
Thank you, Mark. Board members, do you have any questions, comments? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This concludes our budget presentation. We now open it to a comment period for anybody from the public who would like to address the board in regards to the budget or the budget hearing. So if you would like to address the board, we're going to ask that you please come up to the table, use the microphone, state your name, your address. Since we have no indication of anybody wanting to address the board, I will now make a brief summary. At our last board meeting, the board adopted the budget for 2014, 2015. This year and for the past several years, the board and the district administration have prepared the budget with an eye towards the future. We have been prudent in planning how to manage all of our resources, recognizing that decreasing revenues and the state tax cap will continue to impact all our programs and ultimately our students. Our 2014, 2015 budget process began four months ago. Since then, we have sought and received feedback from many residents through community forums and surveys and have carefully weighed your input as we reviewed all our options. On behalf of the board, I want to thank every resident for their input. Your opinions and suggestions were extremely helpful to our process. The 89 million budget we are proposing continues our efforts to maintain the outstanding educational programming we provide for our students. At the same time, this budget reflects the commitment of this board to fiscal responsibility with a budget to budget increase of 2.4 percent. Over the past six years, we have offered budgets with tax levy increases averaging 1.8 percent, mirroring the economic realities of those years. This year, we are, we are asking for your support of a 2.05 percent tax levy increase in order to maintain our outstanding programs. Our balanced approach to budgeting includes cost reductions, the use of $880,000 in reserves, and a tax levy increase that aligns with our state mandated tax gap of 2.05 percent. Overall, this budget reflects our effort to bring before you a responsible plan that sustains our students and our schools, both now and into the future. In addition to the budget, you will see one other proposition on the ballot. This is for the purchase of seven replacement school buses, the cost of which will be taken from our school bus reserve fund and the general fund. Thank you, and please remember to vote on Tuesday, May 20th, from between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM at Penfield High School. This concludes our budget hearing. Board members, we are now on page one of your agenda, back to regular business. May I have a motion, please, that the board approve the following consent agenda that is listed in your agenda? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor, seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. And we have a special report for textbook introduction. Ms. Henry, I believe, is in our audience. And Ms. Rick also. Good evening.
Hello? Here we go. Good evening, my name is Lisa Henry. I am the chair of the English department at the high school. I also am an English teacher and I teach the AP Literature and Composition course. This is a college level course that we offer for our seniors. At the end of the year, they're able to take the AP exam and depending on the college that they attend, they may receive credit for this class. And I'm actually coming before the board for the approval of this text, How to Read Literature Like a Professor. This is actually a fabulous book. And when we put the copies out for the public, we'll also have outlines of what's in it for people to look at. This is written by an actual English professor. And as many of you may have done when you've taken English classes, you might have had, you might have even been the one to ask, why are you saying the color blue means anything special? It's just blue, or that's not really a symbol. And sometimes students have a harder time understanding the deeper level of literature. This is a fabulous book that many AP classes use. Pittsford is currently using it, Brighton has used it in the past, to help explain to students how we talk about literature, how instead of just talking about the plot or the characters, that we look below the surface and find out what it really means. And I especially think this is critical for the course because we've lost even another week of time in our school year. We had an extra week at Christmas and we're going for another week in June. Unfortunately, I don't need another week after the AP exam. I'd like four weeks extra before the AP exam. My students would not agree with me. But I actually think this will help them because I'm going to ask them to read it in the summer. So they will have a basis for how we talk about literature that's at a more demanding level than many books that all of us love to read for fun. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments, board members?
I have a question. I know that over the summer, they are assigned two reading assignments, so I didn't understand if the book is a companion to the two or will they all, that that's required reading plus the two summer reading?
I will take out one of the two. And we'll still have two summer readings. I'll ask them to read this first and then they'll read one of the text for the course. And then I will ask them to use this book to help understand the text. Because what I found when I've just asked the students to read, and traditionally it's been Invisible Man by Ralph Ellison, which is a very fabulous but difficult book, especially if they haven't taken the course yet. So asking them to read two difficult books, I'm not sure how much students have gotten out of it until they get to class and we can talk about it. This book is actually taking the place a little bit of the teacher, of me, in helping them as they read the other book. So I'll still ask them to read two books, I'll just take one of the other texts out and tell them to read this one first, then tell them to read the difficult one, and then try to use something from this book to help them understand it. And we'll talk about it when they come all excited in September.
Well, not to put more work on your plate, but we'd love to hear how it changed the first few weeks of the school, like the conversations, the papers, you know, because I, I think it should probably make a difference. So if you feel like letting us know after.
I would be happy to. I'm actually, I'm talking with some colleagues. Invisible Man, if any of you have read it, is a, is a very seminal work of American literature. It's very difficult for students. And sometimes it puts them off, AP literature. And I actually want to encourage students to challenge themselves and take the course. So I'm talking with some people, I might have a little, a book that's a little more accessible for students because they're reading it on their own in the summer. And we'll save the hard stuff for when they get here.
Any additional questions or comments? Hey, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Great. And this week is a special week. May 5th to May 9th is Teacher Appreciation Week and also Nurses Appreciation Week. In, in Penfield, we celebrate our teachers, our nurses, our caregivers every single day because you touch the life of children in a way that cannot be measured. But it's nice to kind of have a week to officially do it. And I know that the PTAs have, you know, many celebrations in their schools and are encouraging parents and students to have all kinds of ways to celebrate their teachers. But on behalf of this board, I want to thank our teachers, our nurses, for all that you do for us, for our students, for your dedication and everything that you do in the classroom and beyond the classroom. And I want to encourage, board members, Dr. Grimm, if you have anything else to add?
Absolutely. And through our roadshow, as Mark calls it, the traveling roadshow, been able to express that thanks personally for everything that they do. Because all of the different changes that are happening from the state to be able to implement different initiatives, what it really takes is that teacher in the classroom to understand what that is and be prepared for that next day and be able to help each child deliver to what they need. And that's where it happens and thank them.
Great, thank you. I do want to recognize one teacher definitely in our school buildings, Barb on our board here, you know? So thank you for all that you do. All right. Okay, we now move on to visitor speaking time. Does anyone want to address the board? Okay, I guess we're in shortage for people wanting to address the board this evening, but we move on to our student representative. Good evening, Gwen.
Hello? Okay. So let me start by saying this week is AP week. I actually have an AP tomorrow, tomorrow morning, so I'm probably going to be leaving quite shortly so I can go to sleep. But AP week is actually really good at Penfield. I think the people who run APs, which are Mrs. Hart and Mr. Hennig and Mr. Hart and all the people who proctor, they make it as stress-free as possible because the tests are very stressful. So even though we, we go to St. John Fisher, it's still a great experience, like it's, it's, everything is good. The chairs are very comfortable, it's extremely well organized. And it's, it's always nice to think like, oh, I don't have to worry about where I'm going and what time I have to be there because everyone just kind of tells you, like be here at this time, be ready to take your AP. Mr. Hennig always makes sure, makes sure that, you know, no one brings their cellphone and nothing's wrong. You always get your, your AP number at the end and everything is wonderful. Relating to the, we talked a lot about budget, we always talk a lot about budget here. Excitingly, because a lot of the seniors are 18 now, Mr. Gabey will be taking all of his classes down to see the voting process firsthand and to get people to participate in voting because we are of age. So a lot of us will be voting for the first time, May 20th, so that's exciting. I think I saw it in the packet that you're mentioning it later, but Pendulum won first place and I have it. I have the awards, I printed it out. They won the first place with special merit to the American Scholastic Press Association as well as Most Outstanding High School Newspaper. And I included the little letter that they wrote to the editors, who are Emily DeLucia and John Basney and the advisor, Mr. Unterborn. So you can actually see the letter that they wrote and even the little scoring plan, so I'll pass those around for you. Pendulum is great, you can pick it up, it's all over the school. I think every, almost every teacher has it in their room, all of them, multiple editions. We beat the well-known Brighton High School newspaper, The Trappizoid. That's kind of a yay. And we, we, they want, they, they did very well last year and they actually improved this year, they beat their score from last year. We had the, the Raku firing on Monday and the board members were present for that. So thank you very much for coming, it was, it was much fun. We're doing a mini show of ceramic work, so it'll be Raku and some other ceramic pieces at Canal Town, Canal Town Coffee Roasters across from Wegmans. And I'm pretty sure that that's May 15th or May 16th, so that's Thursday or Friday. It's one of those dates. But I know that the art department will send out an invitation, so you'll get that. The Car Crash Reenactment is this Thursday, starting at eighth period in the parking lot by the tennis courts. So that's for seniors only. I just found that out. I have to go to the eighth period, didn't know that. The Film Festival is Thursday, Thursday, May 22nd at 7:00 PM in the auditorium, and that's all student films. Day of Caring is that same Thursday, May 22nd, and Goat Stock is the day afterwards, May 23rd, 7 to 10:00 PM. And there are 10 bands playing, including a middle school music teacher, Mr. Doi, has a band of Penfield alumni and they're playing, I can't remember the name, but they're playing as well as No Child Left Behind, which is the band of high school teachers, social ite teachers. And Key Club right now is running a book drive for the Day of Caring Elementary Schools, same thing that they did last year. And what we're doing this year is for Goat Stock, $5 pre-sale, $7 at the door, and if you bring a book to donate to Goat Stock, you get the $5 pre-sale price because Goat Stock, all the proceeds from Goat Stock are going to the schools, the elementary schools that we volunteered at for Day of Caring, so everything's kind of connected. T-shirts for Goat Stock are coming soon. Senior Ball is this Saturday and Master Minds is moving on to the second, the second round of playoffs this year. So we've been doing pretty well.
Thank you, Gwen. Good luck on your AP tomorrow. Right, board members, before Gwen leaves us, any questions or comments? Yes, Mark?
Thank you for pointing out that students that are 18 can vote. There's something else they can do, I didn't realize it when I was running, but they can also sign petitions. And one of my neighbors happened to be 18 years old and student and signed my petition, so there's more ways that they can influence our district than just voting.
Thank you, Mark. Catherine?
We were having the Raku firing yesterday. The three of us, Carol, Camille, and I, we're all there and it was, it was very, very enjoyable for us to be there. The engagement of the students who were there when we were watching, the participation, the excitement that they were exhibiting, it was, it was wonderful to see. So kudos to the students and to the teachers, especially with it being Teacher Appreciation Week. It was just wonderful to see all of that in play. So thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. We now move on to superintendent's reports. Dr. Grimm?
Okay, do not be afraid from all of the bulleted items up there, some of them are very quick. We do have student staff honors, we'll have a music presentation, math acceleration at Bay Trail, Indian Landing Emergency Project, Visitor Management System, Facilities Committee, working, workers' compensation, and healthcare reform. Many of those are just updates for you. Starting out with student and staff honors, we had, there was a public service announcement contest and PHS students won first, second, and third places in a Stop DWI Public Service Announcement Campaign sponsored by Monroe County, all three places. The students developed their public service announcements as a project for their film class led by Lisa Henry. The first place winner will air on local channels. The winners were first place, Jack Zipro, Alex Dudek, and Josh Clatt. Second place was Wyatt Sullivan. And third place, Marissa Gignello, Natalie Hoppy, and Sky Smith. Science Olympiad, for the third straight year, the Bay Trail Science Olympiad team set a new school record for performance in the New York State Science Olympiad Tournament. The team finished ninth, one place ahead of last year's team out of 36 teams in the tournament. Individual medal winners were Claire Guo and Rachel Wells, taking second in Crimebusters, and Sarah Chen and Paige Jones, taking fifth place in the helicopter event. They had a poster contest, congratulations to Kabul's Elementary Schools Green Team for their winning first place in the New York State Pollution Prevention Institute's Earth Day poster contest. Environmental grants, Indian Landing Elementary School has been named the recipient of two $500 grant awards. One from the Greater Finger Lakes Chapter of AWMA for their No Idling Education Project, which will support the purchase of no idling signs for the parent pickup area. And one was awarded by the New York State Association for Reduction, Reuse, and Recycling to purchase four can and bottle recycling stations. Newspaper award, Penfield High School's newspaper, as Gwen told us, the Pendulum received first place with special merit in the American Scholastic Press Association's annual review and contest awards for scholar, scholastic newspapers. It was also named one of seven most outstanding high school newspapers for 2013, 14. Newsletter article, Bay Trail Middle School's enrichment program was featured in a spring issue of the Teaching for High Potential Newsletter, which is produced by the National Association for Gifted Children. Make sure you check that one out. PTA Reflections Contest, Penfield High School junior Carly Rutan was named the recipient of a National PTA Award for Excellence for her dance choreography entry in the PTA Reflections Contest. Carly is the first Penfield student to receive a national award. Congratulations, Rutan family. And now come to our special representation to the board, Music Department. I'll turn it over to Jim Pfeifer for any introductions or get us started.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. Thank you very much for having me come and speak with you this evening. So we'll start with some celebrations about our K-12 music program. First, of course, is student performance. I was just downstairs, as was Barb, for the beginning of the Indian Landing Concert, and I had a conversation with the Penfield parent in the hallway just before the concert. And his comment was, I just am so amazed when I come to an elementary concert and then a middle school concert and then a high school concert to see the progress of our student musicians. And I couldn't agree more with him. And I think I said something along the lines that they're at an age that they learn a lot quicker than we do. But of course, having our students on the stage and performing and performing in their music classrooms is really the first line of celebration for our program. But I'd also like to point out that we take quite a bit of pride and very literally our responsibility in helping our music students achieve in the academic classroom. It's not shallow words with us. We take that responsibility very seriously and work to build parallels between all of our different content areas. Likewise, we celebrate our student athletes, uh, who are in our music program, which is an enormous number of students. And I'm very proud, uh, that Pete Chambel and I have been able to work together to build a culture where music program and athletic program complement and work to make this possible for students. So, so all of our student performances onstage, in the classroom, and on the athletic fields, we, we share that in celebration with you tonight. Uh, second, student honors and awards accomplishments. We have a very high number of students who participate in all county and all state groups, um, very high membership in Rochester Philharmonic Youth Orchestra and Hoxton Symphony Orchestra. And for those students who choose to go on and be college music majors, uh, they get into some of the, the most prestigious music schools in the country. Student participation in music, we feel, is an even more important marker of success and celebration. And by that, we don't mean the kids that are going on into music, but the kids who go to college and participate in music and become members of their community orchestras and community bands. And like, one Penfield graduate who I saw downstairs with his daughter in the Indian Landing Concert, that they encourage their stu, their own children to become students of the program as well. And lastly, you know, we have some very unique programs here that, uh, I, I think are, are not just unique, um, in our area, but unique in the country. Uh, one is the Penfield Jazz Fundraiser Concerts. I still can't believe we are forty-five consecutive years of this amazing event, which, which is older than all of us in this room, I'm sure. But these concerts bring world-class artists to work with our students from fourth grade to twelfth grade. It's really quite an amazing sight if you've not had a chance to see it. The Penfield Suzuki String Program, nearing its fiftieth birthday, one of the original Suzuki programs in this country. Um, you will not find a Suzuki program anywhere in the country like our program. And it's the foundation of our exceptionally successful orchestral program. The Penfield Music Commission Project, um, I'm not sure if, if everyone understands the significance of this number, but over three hundred and twenty original compositions of music have been commissioned by Penfield, by this student-led club, for our students to perform over the last twenty-some years. Um, some of our partners have included, well, some of the biggest cultural organizations there are, uh, here in town, the Rochester Philharmonic, but also the Smithsonian Institution, Harvard Project Zero, the Brandon Cooper Fund, some, some really prestigious company that we've been able to keep. And then lastly, um, the music department started something called the Futures Project, which I know you're all aware of, and we're very proud of that work. Uh, you know about the online courses, but also that program's been responsible for the SAT review courses, the summer health courses, um, summer arts programming for our students, all sorts of things like that. So we're, we're very proud and, and celebrate all of those things. So the K-5 program, I think you know a lot about this already, but just very quickly, our, uh, in the K-5 schools, uh, all of our students go to general music twice every six-day rotation, and they all have the option at certain grade levels to participate in chorus and band and orchestra. In the middle school program, students also have those same options. They may participate in classroom music or band, orchestra, or chorus in grades six through eight. At the high school, students have the option of expanded classroom music and specialized programs like Music Theory, Music in Our Lives, The Business of Music, which is an online class, chorus, band and orchestra, voice class, and a whole myriad of extracurricular music ensembles as well. Our current initiatives and next steps. Uh, we put a strong emphasis on critical thinking skills in our classrooms. Some of that is just sort of organic. It's hard to be a good musician unless you're a critical thinker. But it's more than that, too. We take a very active role in targeting critical thinking skills and embedding them in the activities that we ask students to do, all the way from elementary school to the high school. That continues. We work on that frequently. In fact, one of our teachers, Shayna Stewart, gave a presentation about that topic at the New York State, uh, School Music Association Conference. Uh, so that's a very important and ongoing initiative for our program. The Flexible Lesson Program, you've heard about perhaps. It's, we're now entering our third year. It's an example of a response that we have to our community. For a certain percentage of students who have trouble attending their lessons during the school day or anxiety about that, we fashioned a program to allow them to attend lessons before or after school. That's an amazing program because it takes teacher volunteers to make that work. So we're very proud of that. Um, we are in year three of a Band and Orchestra Instrument Replacement and Maintenance Plan. It's a ten-year plan. It's been very well thought out and well monitored to help make sure that those instruments, which have an interest, an industry average of about seven to ten years of life, we get about forty years out of our instruments. Uh, but Mark and I have worked, uh, very hard and are facilitators to plan it out so the next forty years will also be well, uh, well, our students will be well-served by those instruments. Uh, and lastly, uh, we have a big initiative about elementary scheduling and music ensemble rehearsals. As you know, a couple of years ago, the, the elementary schools, in response to the ever-increasing pressure of time, um, in, uh, addressing, testing, uh, have had to make changes in their schedule. And one of those changes is that rehearsals have been moved to recess time. And over the course of these two years, and now with our, our data for next year, we found that it is having a negative impact, impact on participation. So we're working very closely with our elementary principals and Jim Pfeifer to brainstorm and put together some solutions to help mitigate that effect. That's all I got. What questions can I help you with?
Thank you, Jim. Board members, questions or comments? Barb?
I have no questions, but I, I have a couple of comments. I'm not sure that, um, uh, some of the elementary parents that are watching this and future parents of elementary students know that, um, this is kind of exciting, that Jim Dozer and, um, Pete Chambel share an office. So to me, I think that would be a great reality show. Just to see how you two, you know, athletics and music together. But it's been how many years you've, you've done that? I mean, even before Pete, right?
Why, it just seems like yesterday.
Right.
But the other thing that I wanted to comment on is because, uh, this Sunday, um, my husband and I will be in attendance to, um, Megan's graduation from grad school with distinction. And long, long ago, because of the wonderful, um, Suzuki program, um, I, uh, encouraged her to do it. Okay, I made her do it. And, um, because of all the things that were there about how it would help with math and science and, um, learning to do things. And I can't say enough because it did help her in math and science. And now she'll be, um, graduating and hopefully getting a job. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Catherine?
I just can't, um, let you leave without me reiterating again my appreciation for the music program and how it's helped my kids. One of my, uh, children, my youngest one, did, was involved in Suzuki. And then, you know, my middle son, Harrison, who was in the jazz band and took trumpet all, from fourth grade all the way through his first year in college. And, um, I always felt that the music program here in Penfield just brought out the best, not only in his own personal talent, but in the, the talent of the other kids that, whose lives you've touched. So I'm very appreciative and I wanted to express that gratitude and just to say thank you. And, and, um, I'm very happy to, um, to just reiterate that again.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I did not realize that the Penfield Music Commission was student-led, which I think is great. And I'm glad that I learned that. Um, and I think it points out another great thing about the music program, which is that there are so many, you find leadership opportunities for the kids everywhere, where it's hiring back kids who graduated to teach over the summer, or it's a section leader for band or the choral department. And I think that's just a great way to give those kids those opportunities. Um, and my only question is, all the other items have the date of how long they've been in the district, forty-five years for the Jazz Fundraiser, fifty for Suzuki. How long has the Penfield Music Commission been around?
Nineteen eighty-two.
Okay. I'll have to do the math. Okay. I'll do it. Thanks. Thanks for...
Watching the students go on, go through the program and then onto college and doing something that they love because they love to do it, um, i- is amazing to me. My youngest is in the, uh, course at Geneseo, run by, or led by a, um, a Penfield resident as well. And it's, it's just amazing to have the kids as they, as they go through this program, which is phenomenal, into the college setting where, um, they're, they're participating because they love it. It's not a requirement. It's not, it's not anything that, that they have to do, but they want to do it. They want to fit it in because they love it, doing it so much. And I think that's, that's instilled at a young age in Penfield. So thank you for caring for our children as they go through and then just fostering that love that goes on with them. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you. Jim, this was a great presentation, just a glimpse of what you do in the music program, you and all the other teachers who are with you. I do want to come back to Barb's point about athletics and music, having one of those students who is in athletic and music. It's, you know, watching how the coach not only just says, yeah, we'll work with you, but really put it in writing and really understand that, yes, you cannot be at practice because you are in this jazz group. And yes, you cannot attend morning practice because you are going to be in women's select. So, you know, this understanding, you know, on the part of the athletic department and working with you, and just like you work with them, I think is just, is just outstanding. I also, you know, sometimes we think of our music program that it starts when the day starts in school and then ends when the day ends. It does not. Women's Select starts at six fifty AM. Karen can attest to that, how many times we drive there, you know, and you see all the parents dropping off their kids. Jazz Choir is after school. Um, you know, Show Choir is after school. And no later than this weekend, I think the amount of students who were at Solo Fest in Letchworth High School, could it be closer, please? You know, and you, you just get there. And who, of course, is there? Friday, you know, the whole time students are performing. Saturday, the whole time the students are performing, Mrs. Abrahamian and Mr. Leib, and they are there with them. And it, it, it's just unbelievable. You know, one, one last thing, how the kids keep on using the music. This past weekend was the sing-out performance. Uh, you know, for those of you not familiar with it, it's community service through music and huge performance, not in Penfield, but for Monroe County. Sixty-one kids in the cast, thirty-three are from Penfield High School. So, you know, and of course, I'm counting. And my daughter looks at me and goes, yeah, only you would count, Mom. No, not only me would count, you know, but this just, I mean, you're seeing all these faces that we see all the time. And of course, who was in the audience after two days at Letchworth High School but Mrs. Abrahamian, you know, supporting her students. So your support goes way beyond the classroom and the building. And for all of us, we, we thank you. We're very proud of what you do with our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your support all year.
Okay. Next up, we have an examination of acceleration at Bay Trail Middle School. I don't know if Jim wants to give a little mini intro for that?
Thank you, Dr. Grimm. Um, I think it's fair to say that the region's reform agenda and the implementation of the Common Core learning standards have presented all districts, but certainly not, uh, just Penfield, with some challenges along the way. Um, as you may recall, this is the first year of the, uh, course of integrated algebra that is aligned to the Common Core learning standards. Um, in three through eight, we began that process last year. Um, and I use the process, the term process usefully because we did all of grades three through eight last year. Um, one of the unanticipated challenges, I think, of, of implementing the Common Core standards in math three through eight and then leading to, uh, a Common Core algebra course is, um, what I've talked about before as, as gaps, implementation gaps. Um, I've shared with the board and with the public that, you know, when you make a jump, a wholesale jump in standards from one level to another in large, in a large chunk without phasing them in, there are gaps in understandings and learnings from those old standards to the new. Um, I've used the example of fifth-grade students who were taught to old standards in fourth grade. Then when you raise the standards not only by grade level, but also because of a new set of standards, there are gaps. And our teachers have worked very, very hard to fill those gaps for our students and to help them be successful. Um, but as, as I think our teachers have, have observed and our students have experienced through the course of this year, um, because of the way the Common Core learning standards realigned the mathematics standards, as, uh, Dr. Maloney had shared with you during her math presentation earlier, um, and she'll share with you again today, we are seeing significant gaps, um, from, uh, our students in, in seventh grade toward the Common Core algebra course. And it's, it's caused for some concern and the need to examine our, the opportunities that we provide for students to double accelerate in mathematics at the middle school level. Um, I wanna, I'm happy to have, uh, Dr. Maloney here and, and Mr. Buddington, the principal, and also Mrs. Harrigan, um, who's the, uh, Bay Trail Administrator who oversees mathematics here with us tonight, to talk about the work that they have done to examine this issue, this concern, um, and also provide a recommendation and, and on next steps moving forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to share the work we've been doing with the math department at Bay Trail around acceleration. Before we get into the presentation, I do just want to take a chance, since I have a microphone in public, to write, to, to echo the board's sentiments and Teacher Appreciation Week and Mr. Dozer's sentiments for the hard work the music department does and all the teachers in the district. From the administrators, it's greatly appreciated. It, they help us do our job well, and our students are clearly the ones that benefit. So I do appreciate that for our teachers. So as we look at the changing environment we have, this, the state, as, as Jim said, the state changes curriculum. One of the things that we, as we look at our... That would help. Here we go. As we, as we look at the district mission statement, we work in a collaborative environment. And, and that, that's a key to, for us, for the processes when we deal with changes. Leslie and I and Mary Ann and, and Jim came over to Bay Trail. We met on our half-day conference day in March with the math teachers at Bay Trail to talk about what are they experiencing with students in the accelerated classes, given the changes of the Common Core. And part of the reason for that discussion is that as we have adapted our curriculum to the Common Core, our data changes. The students, and we'll get a little bit more into it as we keep going, but the students that are currently in our accelerated program in seventh grade algebra were placed under our old system of data. We didn't have any Common Core data in scheduling those students because we didn't get the test results back from the state until August last summer. So we're in this process, even though we've shifted our curriculum, we shifted our instruction, the data that we got from the state is now coming to us about Common Core and our students are experiencing it. the state is now coming to us about Common Core and our students are experiencing it. And that leads us to the conversations with the teachers about our four essential questions of learning. What is it we want students to know? We know it's the Common Core curriculum. What does that mean for our students? What does it mean for the instruction in the classroom? The questions about how do we know if they know it, and what do we do if they do? What do we do if they don't are the questions that this really focuses on. The district mission statement looks at individual diverse talents of all our students. The Bay Trail mission statement talks about adapting to students' unique young adolescent needs. We know the Common Core curriculum. One of the key shifts in math, both math and ELA, but as we're talking about math tonight, is looking at the depth and complexity of the student thinking and their mathematical thinking and reasoning. That presents challenges for students with their unique needs, especially in middle school, where we have a wide range of students. As we look at what we believe in middle school, that the students need a safe, supportive, nurturing environment in middle school to face those rigorous challenges. What we don't want to have is a middle school program that students don't feel comfortable coming in, they don't feel like they're going to be successful, or they don't feel like they're going to have the support to be successful within the program. As we look at our commitments at Bay Trail, it's that meaningful, rigorous instructional program that becomes our focus. And so, as we talk to the math teachers about the acceleration program, what they're experiencing with the students, and how, as we approach scheduling for next year, we should be looking at, what data should we be looking at? How should we be looking at, what's an appropriate education courses for the students based on their level of ability? It led us to this conversation. Leslie's going to talk a little bit about, just review some of the background that you've heard before around the shifts, just so that you get a complete picture of where we're looking at.
So, this slide, I think I've shown this at the last 25 presentations I've done. This is the slide that shows what's driving us right now, what's driving us to provide the best education for students in order to have them be college and career-ready. And those three pieces are data-driven instruction, teacher-leader effectiveness, the APPR process, and the Common Core learning standards. This presentation is going to focus in on that Common Core learning standards piece, but it's also important to remember that the data-driven instruction is really what's driving our conversation with the math department and then what has driven this decision. So, just a reminder for the public, the Common Core learning standards, where they came from. Two consortiums came together. It was a state-led effort. The Common Core standards really are the best of what's out there in terms of research on how students learn, how they learn mathematics, and the order of how mathematics should be taught in order to prepare students to be college and work-ready. So, our Common Core timeline in Penfield, in 2010, the Board of Regents adopted the Common Core learning standards. In 2011 and '12, we began our work transitioning to the Common Core. In 2012, '13, the middle school math instruction was first aligned to the Common Core because the common, the, excuse me, the state assessments last spring was the first time that they were aligned to the Common Core. So, last spring was the first time the assessments were aligned to the Common Core. That data from how our students performed, we didn't have that data until the end of this past summer, until the summer of 2013. So, that's going to play a key role as we get further into the presentation.
So, and for the board, I'm sure the board's aware, but also for members of the community, the Part 100 regulations also define our educational program for middle school. And what, they require acceleration in math for 8th graders and the opportunity to take high school courses in mathematics and at least one of the following other areas. So, as we, as we did the review, as we're talking to the math teachers, we do have parameters and guidelines from the state that we need to keep in mind as part of that conversation as well.
So, this is a graphic that represents our current model for math acceleration. You'll see that the first row is what a student that is not accelerated, those are the courses that they would take. You'll notice that in that 6th grade column, that only Math 6 is filled in. Reason being, all students come from four elementary buildings and all students take Math 6. In the middle of the 6th grade year, we begin, well, actually, we begin at the beginning of 6th grade, but through the first semester, we're analyzing student data. We're watching how students perform on common assessments. We're looking at that New York State data, and we're, we're trying to determine which students are ready for acceleration. What students do we recommend for either one-year or two-year acceleration? In 7th grade, a student that is not accelerated takes Math 7. A student that is one-year accelerated takes Math 7, 8. And a two-year accelerated student currently takes Algebra 7. This year, that Algebra 7, as well as Algebra 8, will be the Common Core Algebra. And the Common, they'll have to take the Common Core Regents exam. So, you'll see that as the progression transitions through the high school, there become more options. So, I created a graphic that included all of the options, and it got so big, it took up one slide, and it was very confusing. And so, I said, "Okay, let's scrap that." One of the pieces that's unique to Penfield, we offer a course at the high school level that allows students to accelerate again. It's an Algebra 2 pre-calculus accelerated course. So, that course allows students to take Algebra 2 the first half of the year and pre-calculus the second half of the year. There is no typical student that takes that course. Sometimes it's a student who, hey, the math just clicked in. They decide, "Hey, I'm going to, I want to accelerate. I want to take calculus at the high school level. I'm going to take this course." Sometimes it's a single accelerated student who says, "Hey, I want to challenge myself. I love math. I want to be able to take AP Stats and calculus. So, in order to fit that in, I'm going to take the double accelerated class." So, there's lots of different, this is a unique Penfield course that just fits our kids. The other piece that's unique to Penfield, we offer a lot of options for kids at the senior level. We offer AP Calculus AB, AP Calculus BC, Supercalculus, Calculus 3, which is a dual-credit MCC course, as well as AP Statistics. Our, currently, our Calculus 3 course, we are the only district in our BOSIs that is able to offer Calculus 3 because we're the only district that has enough students to run the course. And I believe next year, we have enough kids to run two sections. So, this is, this is a, you know, we take pride in this.
And the students this year in 7th grade that are in the Math 7, 8, the one-year accelerated, and the Algebra, those are the two groups of students that, as we built this year's schedule, those students were placed and through conversations with the teachers, with their families, with the students, and Ms. Harrigan takes on all of that and greatly appreciate that work. But, it's a lot of conversation. And in order to accommodate what we anticipated with the Common Core changes in Math 7, 8, we added additional math during the home base time, one out of three days this year for those students. For the students in Algebra, the state was kind of, beginning of the year, didn't necessarily say we were Common Core Algebra. That kind of came out as we went through the year. And the students in both of those groupings this year have faced some significant challenges with the Common Core curriculum, which is part of the other reason for the conversation. As we look at the struggles our students are having and the time we have to meet both of those needs, it would be great if I could give students two math classes every day to cover the curriculum. With all the Part 100 regulations, we can't do that in our schedule.
And I think it's important to note at this slide that these unique characteristics of Penfield, we're proud of these. We didn't want to lose these as we made this recommendation, this decision, in terms of how to modify our acceleration model. We really wanted to still be able to provide these opportunities for students. So, just to give a little, a picture around what, what we're experiencing, this is a graphic that represents the traditional U.S. approach prior to the Common Core. So, I want you to think about it like a buffet. So, at a buffet, you can go and you can be like me and you can start with the dessert. Or, you can be like my husband and you can go start with the carving station. This is how the standards in the traditional U.S. approach to mathematics were typically arranged. And what that allowed for was, some districts started with dessert. Other districts started with the carving station. And because of that, there were lots of differences among districts, even as close as between us and the next district over, or between us and a district in California. With the Common Core, instead of being that buffet, it's a very well-laid-out seven-course meal. So, it's very important, the salad that you're having at the beginning of the meal is, complements your full entree, which is Algebra, at the end. So, we wanted to be very careful in the sense that when we were looking at this recommendation in terms of how to, how to modify the acceleration model, we wanted to make sure that we were keeping with the Common Core and the courses or the recommendations that are laid out, but also, we're dealing with the results of the buffet. Because of the buffet, we've got, the buffet allowed for gaps to be created. The Common Core, it tells you exactly what to teach. With, as Wynton mentioned, what our teachers are experiencing is, there just isn't enough time to be able to get in the seven-course meal. And we can't, we don't want to ruin the seven-course meal. We want each piece because it's important and it's critical to the entire experience, to the meal.
So, here are the challenges that that conversation resulted in identifying with the, with the math teachers. The shifts in the math content across grade levels. So, some of the content that was in 8th grade math, pre-C common core, is now 7th grade math, some is 6th grade. So, the content shifted around. Prior to the Common Core, when we were in this approach, there was overlap. Two-thirds of the 8th grade math curriculum was the same as Algebra. So, students that received Algebra instruction in that double accelerated in 7th grade were getting, by the nature of the curricular alignment, two-thirds of the 8th grade math curriculum. So, if they were double accelerated, there weren't gaps. With this Common Core approach, if you accelerate into Algebra, those two pieces of the number system and expressions and equations are gaps that the students might have some awareness of, but they weren't instructed in the thinking skills around those. So, when they get to higher math in the high school, that may present more challenges for them because they don't have a solid foundation of those pieces leading into Algebra. And within the Common Core standards, they advocate only for a one-year acceleration process. So, as you look at the Common Core, they're talking about meeting that Part 100 requirement with only a one-year acceleration, not a double acceleration. And both Leslie and I know from talking to our principal colleagues and the math directors in other districts, this is not just a Penfield conversation right now. Every district that we know of is having this type of conversation. They're looking at their math program in light of the Common Core and what makes, what does it make sense to do for their students in their district.
So, this is the recommended model for math acceleration. We would like to start this model starting next year. As you'll see, it advocates for just one-year accelerated. We're not making major changes because we want to keep, we still want those additional options to exist for students. We want to keep encouraging students to love math and take math all four years in high school. So, we will continue to have the Algebra 2 pre-calculus accelerated course pending enrollment. As long as there's kids, we'll, we'll continue to run it, as well as our options in terms of the dual credit and the calculus.
And we're still looking at, with the Math 7, 8, still scheduling that additional time during home base. Because now, doing that two years within one year, we need, we need that additional time for students. And the students are finding it helpful in, in understanding the material.
So, this is, allows you to look at both models side by side, and you'll see that what we've essentially done is we've removed that two-year accelerated, that, those course options, and now it will simply be offering the one-year accelerated option.
And as we look at, this is the first step of a process for us, is talking to the board about the conversations that we've been having and, and where all of our work leads us to the conclusion it leads us to. But, we recognize that as part of moving forward with, with this type of process, we have a lot of communication we need to do with parents, we need to do with students, and that would be through parent information sessions, continued discussions with the math department, a lot of dialogue and communication with the parents, with the students. And the difference in some of that communication is also having it be back to the K, the 7-12 model. So, parents really understand where students are going because it, what they do, the choice they make now in 7th grade will affect the opportunities they have in the high school.
Okay, we're done with, okay. Thank you. Sure. Kathryn?
Okay. I'm not, I'm going to need clarification exactly on what acceleration is. Is that an option, or is that?
It's an option.
It is. Okay. So, then, if, if they choose acceleration, then, starting in the 7th grade, that gives them options as they proceed, the older they get. If they don't start acceleration in 7th grade, does that alter their options as they get older?
It, it changes some of the options. There's still options to accelerate at the high school. If, if a student doesn't accelerate, they go through that first track that's in pink there. With math, every year, they would end up in pre-calculus as a senior.
Okay.
But, within, once they get to high school, pending enrollment and interest, and student interest for the levels of courses, there are those opportunities to, to double up on the courses, even if they don't start acceleration in middle school.
All right.
So, they could accelerate, they could choose to accelerate in 10th grade, they could choose to accelerate in 11th grade, any place where you see that Algebra 2 on the, on the graphic.
Yes, right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Help me make sure I got this correct. You know, part of the decision, again, at the 6th grade and 7th grade, is not just their ability, but also their ability to work more independently. Isn't, is, the accelerated courses are more geared towards independent work for the students versus, correct, you know, more heavily taught, shall we say? Is that correct?
Um, under this, the old approach, I would say that's, that was more of a correct statement. Under the Common Core approach, because like Leslie said, this year's Common Core Algebra, next year will be Common Core Algebra and Geometry, and that will continue to build, that's less the case. Because, because it is that depth of thinking to do with the students. And, and it's not a depth of thinking, it's, students need to be still guided through that process. Whereas, under this approach, you were dealing with somewhat more of a rote process. If you knew the steps, you could, you could do it on your own, where this is now really, do you have the foundation to move on to that next level of thinking? So, what we're finding with the Common Core is, you need much more of that teacher guidance and facilitation than you can, and much less of being able to give a student a textbook, have them look at the problems and read, and then, and they can follow it. So, and for, for parents at home, if they go to Engage New York, they can look at some of the modules and see what that work actually looks like.
And with that, and now that we're, the proposal is to get rid of a category of classes, and we, how do we tie that into the resources that were used for that category of classes versus the additional rigor or instruction that's necessary based on the Common Core alignment?
As far as resources, are you talking material, staffing?
More staffing. I mean, we had a whole set of classes here, a whole pathway here that's, that you're moving.
Yeah.
And how can we take that, that resource that was supporting that pathway and put it towards the other two?
It's, it's the same number of students. So, instead of having three Algebra 7 classes this year and two 8th grade geometry classes, next year, we'll have, those Algebra 7 kids will still continue on their path to geometry because they're already in that, that track. to geometry because they're already in that, that track. There'll be three geometry track, classes in eighth grade next year, but instead of just three Math 7-8, we're gonna, looking at five, six, maybe seven Math 7-8 classes, depending on that data conversation with the math teachers about what's the appropriate data to look at when we look at student grades in the classroom, their test performance, their benchmark assessments, the student anxiety and stress level. What, as we look at all of that, what's the appropriate next step for students? And that conversation with parents as well, about that path for their child as they go through high school. That step is starting six-go-seven. And so that, that conversation determines the alignment of those, those resources, depending on the number of sections.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Karen?
In the, in the pink area, what is the requirement, the state requirement for math? A student taking, following that progression wouldn't have to take Precalculus, but they have to take Algebra II? What's the cutoff?
Not necessarily. So the graduation requirement for math, they have to take the algebra exam, they have to pass the algebra exam. And nine, well, it could occur at any point. Current ninth graders have to take the Common Core algebra exam. They don't necessarily have to pass that exam, but they have to sit for that exam. So that counts as their graduation requirement. They need to have two Regents-level math classes in order to graduate. Typically, a student takes algebra and geometry. To get advanced designation, the student has to have the three, the algebra, the geometry, and Algebra II.
And the, realizing that not every student loves math as much as we do, they're, they're eligible to pick something different. I mean, there are other, other avenues that they can meet those requirements with.
Yep. So typically, a student would take Algebra, Geometry, and then at the 10th grade, 10th grade go 11th grade, they would make some decisions. Do they want to go to Algebra II? Maybe they're not ready for Algebra II, but they want that advanced designation. We do offer an option, a course called Math III. So that will prepare a student for Algebra II, so that as a senior, they could take Algebra II to get that advanced designation. I think that's one of the reasons why, in one of the slides, where Dr. Grimm talked about the number of students, the percentage of students that we have earning advanced designation, that's a very high, I think it was 67 percent, that's very high. And I, I attribute it to, we've been able to create a, a path for students to earn that Algebra II credit at a pace that works for them.
It, it has been fascinating to me, in the 15 years that I've been sitting on this side of the table, to watch the progression and evolution of math in this district. It just, just fascinating. You know, good, bad, ugly, sometimes absolutely, but it's, it's great that we can offer all the right opportunities for our kids. So thank you for continuing the evolution of that, I appreciate it.
You are welcome. Camille?
The, the fact that we had the two-year acceleration was a real point of pride for Penfield. And I remember a long time ago, Brighton used to bus students over to take our Calc III class. And you were just telling us that that Calc III class has two sections, which is phenomenal. That's a direct result of the fact that we had two years acceleration. Losing the two years, we're gonna lose, you lose the bodies eventually unless they double, double up. So it, it's a real loss to the program because it means in that senior year, when those kids could have taken Calc III, or AP Stats, or some of the other ones that you, you listed, those courses just aren't going to be as accessible anymore. And those are courses that our teachers are passionate about teaching and our kids are passionate about taking. So luckily, there is still this, what we've lost is our flexibility.
Right.
And you've explained it beautifully, why that happened, and it wasn't your choice and you had to work it, and not so the other districts, and I understand that. So now there's this one window where if they double up for one year and take a two-period class, it can kind of get back on track and have those options, senior year. So I'm, I'm hoping that there's a way we can identify maybe some other ways for the kids to accelerate. Because if they double up in math, that means now they don't have the flexibility to double up in science, which I know some of, these are the kids who are, they're, they're not going to say, oh, I'll take a study hall instead. They can't double up on a foreign language, or maybe take extra English electives, or take art and music, because they had to double up so they could take the math. So one of the things I'm thinking about in this kind of half-baked idea, but I'm wondering if we can work with some other districts. We have a mechanism now with the Futures Project to teach courses online. Just wondering if creatively we can find ways for kids to have more, just have more windows for them to jump on. Because developmentally, you're right, they're not all ready in sixth grade to double accelerate, but they might be ready a little bit later. So I just hope that we can maybe identify some other ways.
Camille, you, you must be reading my mind because that's actually what we've been doing. We've been in communication just as recently as today, talking with other districts to determine how they're addressing this, and can we work together? Because why reinvent the wheel? It really is about how can we continue to offer this, this catalog of courses that we offer for students?
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you. I have a few questions still. Where would a student, for example, in your recommended grade tier, take Calc III?
So what a student would most likely do is at, in the 10th grade, they would take the Algebra II or Precalculus Accelerated Course, right now as it stands. But as Camille mentioned, we are investigating some other options. I didn't want to put those up here since they aren't set in stone yet, but we've got some other options that we're, that we're investigating.
Okay, I'm glad, because I have a lot of notes about that and the, the lack of flexibility that we're going to have. And some concerns regarding, where is it? Okay, the Algebra II Precalc that are taken as one course during double periods. You know, the, the schedule is just so, you feel it's so rigid sometimes, even though it shouldn't be. But especially for the students who are taking advanced classes, you know, it's, okay, if you're gonna take that class, then you really cannot take that other one because you cannot fit it in your schedule. So do we have any concerns? Because really, kids are, are, you know, double, double periods, that's two periods of their schedule. So do we have any concerns there?
That, that is what's currently happening at the high school as well. And I know Dr. Putnam feels that pinch when he builds the high school schedule.
Oh, okay.
And it, because it, it, it's choices. And as we continue to, to want to offer more and more options for students, we run into choices. And unfortunately, some of the things going on at the state level are forcing us to, pinching us with some of those choices, so.
Yeah. And I will be honest, Carol, in the eight years that I've been here, I still, it's very difficult to predict what the enrollment is going to be in that Algebra II Precalculus Accelerated Course. Like I said, it, there isn't a typical student that takes that course. So sometimes the enrollment, sometimes we've, there have been years that we've had enough to run two sections, which is, if you think about it, that's four periods. And then there are other years where we barely have enough to run the course. So it goes up and down. I, I think it's really based on the student need and, and what the students want to take.
Okay. So will you keep on monitoring the enrollment then? You know, do we have one class, for example, right now for this?
Yes, we have one class right now.
Okay. And, and I know they're working on the schedules, it's not finalized. How is it looking for next year? Is it gonna be one or two?
I don't know, I don't know numbers yet.
Okay. All right. And, and I appreciate your comments. I realize that you did not just wake up one day and decide to change everything. We're kind of cornered in all of this and trying to do the best for our students, so I really appreciate this. Thank you for the presentation, for answering all our questions. You know, I hope you'll keep us posted on what enrollments are for next year, and you know, how this is rolled out, especially when you get to the part where you're gonna be talking with parents and, you know, seeing what the reaction is. And definitely next year, monitoring all of this.
And I think it's, nothing is set in stone. I think it's something that we will continue to evaluate and to monitor, and maybe we will come to a point where we'll have double-accelerated again at the middle school. But right now, this is really what we need to do, what's best for our kids.
Thank you. Dr. Grimm mentioned that there would be several brief presentations, so you've had those, so now I'll do the long ones. Actually, just a few short, really, items to update the board. The first one has to do with Indian Landing Sewer Project. This is really later in your agenda. We talked about this at the last board meeting, so this is really an update of that. As you know, we'd initially budgeted and planned on replacing the failing sewer at Indian Landing as an emergency project. We plan on replacing it over the course of this summer. We need to, because we can't be assured that, over time, over next year, that we would be able to offer school. If that sewer fails, obviously, that's, we wouldn't be able to offer school. So we want to replace it over the summer. We intend to, we'd initially budgeted $187,005 for that work. But there is asbestos in the crawl space where that sewer connects to the building that'll need to be remediated. Asbestos in that area, it's a dirt floor crawl space, will be challenging to remediate. And so we've, I updated you with an estimated $200,000 increase at the last meeting. Our final budget tonight, after we received the, the report from the asbestos designer and took a look at what would be required, the recommended budget for night, tonight is $487,000. So you have two resolutions on your agenda tonight. The first is a SICA resolution, because this is a construction project, you're ob, you are obligated to go through the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Review Act. There is, however, an exemption, not an exemption, this is classified. It's been reviewed by our architect and by our school attorney, by Mr. Primo, who handles our SICA work. It is Type II. Those are routine actions of a school district, repairs and so on, replacement and kind, that are determined to never have a significant impact on the environment. And we have a letter from Mr. Primo that, in his opinion, this qualifies for that. It does require the board to take action, though, as the legislative body to make that determination. So that's in your agenda tonight. You are determining that the, the Indian Landing project is a routine action and will not have significant impact. And you are also approving a budget. There is a resolution for a $487,000 capital project. The funds for that, you will appropriate $269,152 from the remaining balance of the $73 million capital project. This project, work at Indian Landing, was included in that project. It was a bathroom project, this is within that scope. So that will, that depletes, completely depletes the funding there. So you will also appropriate $217,000 from unreserved fund balance. Both those items are in the agenda, you've had that ahead of time. Are there any questions? Is there anything I can assist with on that?
Thank you, Mark. Board members, any questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thanks. Just a couple of other quick updates. I just want to bring, you know, this is sort of, I guess, the duck model for the way schools are. It seems like we're floating, but there's an awful lot of paddling going on underneath. And I, we just felt the need to bring the board up to speed on a few of the initiatives that are moving forward. So one of the initiatives that's grown out of conversations at the District Safety Committee and as a result of our, of our district-wide security project, is the implementation of a visitor management system. So I, you know, if you've toured BOSI's, you've gone through this, they have a, a system in place that is one of the ones that we are looking at, actually. It's essentially, this is software that automates and improves visitor check-in as you enter the building. So the process, there's, it allows you to scan your driver's license, it then prints a visitor pass with your photo on it, that visitor pass self-cancels. But what it does, what the software does, is as you enter then, it, it checks you against a database of known sex abusers, for example, or against our internal system of, you know, do not release lists and so forth. It's, we've had lots of conversations through the years about this, and honestly, I think the Safety Committee and me, as a member of the Safety Committee, never quite felt that it was time to implement. At this point, we believe, the Safety Committee, after lots of conversation, believes that it's becoming the standard in schools. It's, it's present in, in BOSI's, Pittsford, Brighton, Webster are a few of the one, area districts that I know have implemented, and we feel that the time is right for us to move forward with that. We're in the process right now of evaluating software. So one of the things that changed my mind around this, to be honest with you, and also the mind of the committee, as we thought about it, the software's gotten better, so we want to take a look at that. And we have a team internally looking at how that's gonna work. Because we want it, obviously, to be, you know, the appropriate software. We want it to integrate with Infinite Campus, our, our current software system. So we want them to talk as best they can. We want to make sure that these pieces fit together. So Ed Turkowski, Nancy Bradstreet, Marty Morrow, Howard Henick, Mark Nelson, Sue Coomer, and Wynne Buddington are going to be evaluating the available packages. We want to select software by the end of this year, look at, doing the background work in terms of summer installations over the course of the summer. One of the things that made a difference for me, actually, I think we, I learned from Brighton, and that was the implementation of this. Because one of the, I've, I've said many times in many of these meetings, and I think you've heard me say that, school safety is really this balance between safe and welcoming. Prisons are safe, you can't get in or out, but they're not very welcoming. And, and we live in a community where we want our parents to feel welcome in our schools, but we need to keep our kids safe. And that balance is hard, and, and it changes, it's a moving target. So we've had conversations about this through the year and just never, through the years, and just never felt that the time was right. Brighton, as they rolled theirs out, took an approach of a soft rollout, and it's what we're recommending that we do as well. They, they bought the software, but rather than a parent's first knowledge of it be when they first approached their elementary school entryway and be greeted, let me see your, let me see your driver's license, and here's our new system. That balance of safe and welcoming feels a little shocking. And so what Brighton did is they, they purchased the software and rolled it out throughout the course of the year, throughout the course of a, about a half a year, at things like curriculum nights. They'd have a kiosk, they'd explain to the group briefly what, how this is gonna work. They'd give parents the chance to have their driver's license scanned, because once you're in the system, you're in. See how it works, get a badge, and, and have a, an opportunity for a conversation that's different than the conversation when you first show up. That, that idea, that idea for how you could implement it, really changed the thinking of the Safety Committee and my thinking as well about how this could integrate in a safe and welcoming school. So we're recommending that we follow a similar process, and we're all, we're talking about that. We've, Dr. Grimm's had preliminary conversation with the Parent Advisory Board. We'd want to look to their guidance in terms of rollout, how do you think this would work? What, what issues do we need to look at? But really, if we stick to this schedule, we'd be looking at, at anticipating a full live implementation, having it in place in our schools by January, mid, nothing firm about that date, but by the middle of next year. Any questions?
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? John?
I think it's great, and one of the things, I think it's good to be sensitive to as well, those of us that go to Albany, there's certain buildings in Albany that you need to have your picture taken, and you have to put your license through and whatever, and it's, it's just not handled well. So I think in the, the other buildings that you think will be more secure aren't, and it's easy to get through. So perception is the reality there. So I think the more you can look at that, just be more user-friendly. The other thought was, a lot of times, I think we have students that might go back, you know, to a class, like they want to see a former teacher or something like that, and, and they probably are under 18, and they don't have ID. I mean, well, they would have the Penfield ID, but would that work, or what would you do?
I don't know. You know, we're gonna have to work through some of those issues. And, and we can also think about other implementation issues as we go along. So, you know, the, the one that we're really talking a little bit about is when you have mass entrance to the school. So, you know, we're having the play, or the, at Harris Hill, like the Veterans Assembly, here comes a whole crowd of people. How are we gonna handle that? Is that different than the day-to-day routine? Do we have a different process? Do we have a different process? Do we try and work everybody through, you know, I, on, today, I don't know those answers, because we haven't worked through this yet. We're not at that end of that, of this process. We're gonna need to work through all of that.
Well, and one of the things, too, just to finish it, is, in Albany, we're lucky enough to call ahead and give, like, a social security number, so as a group, we can expedite it in. So possibly, there might be a way, not that you want that information, but for grandparents or something like that, because typically, they're not, they're not used to doing that. And if there's a way to expedite that for, for those type of things ahead of time on a form or something, I think it'd be easier.
Yeah, I, we, we want to be sensitive to that. We feel like this is becoming the standard for a very real reason, and we understand that. But it, it is, it's always that balance between safe and welcoming and a school that lives in a community that supports it. You know, you want to honor that as well. So we're, we're committed to working our way through. So that's that. Facilities Committee, I would ask, we've had some conversation about this at our board workshops. We, the time has come, I think, that we begin to have meetings of the Facilities Committee that'll guide the, the board in the development of the board's next five-year capital plan, as well as the development of the, of the building condition survey. So the, you know the purpose of the committee, you've approved the charter. The membership, though, requires two board members, and there's been a little bit of, I think, confusion, just on my part, I'm sure, about who's gonna be serving. So if we could resolve that tonight, I'd like to begin by sending out a schedule, starting to get that work in place.
I don't think you're confused. I think there's a lot of interest in being on the committee.
You can all serve, the more the merrier, but I leave that to you.
Catherine had expressed interest, so, interest, so did Mark, so did John, and myself. I'll happily withdraw my name.
And I'll happily withdraw mine.
So would I.
Okay, now it went the other way.
Okay, it doesn't work that way.
Well, if we could, if we could just state, the duties of President and Vice President are very busy.
Yeah, it's okay.
And demanding, but really, and I think it's a great experience, you know, I've been involved in this type of thing before, in a career, but I think it's great to have other minds involved in that that may not have as much experience.
Yes, because I was interested in doing it, but I, you know, I was just trying to accommodate.
Yeah. Okay, so that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, so your board members are Catherine Dean and Mark Elledge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You say that now.
So I appreciate your willingness to serve, especially after you saw the schedule that I sent. So you, you can't say that you don't know what you're in for. It, it's interesting work, it is, having gone through it with the last committee, but it is demanding. Workers' compensation, this is really just foreshadowing. I want to bring the board up to speed a little bit on what's going on with regard to the workers' compensation initiative. So Penfield belongs to a consortium, a self-insured consortium of Monroe County BOSEs and school districts. We were a founding member. It was established in 1987, and it's been very successful for us in terms of saving, generating savings for the school district. Over the course of our participation in the plan, we've saved about $2.9 million. This graph shows what that looks like. So the, the green bars are the Rochester Area School Workers' Compensation Program Premium. That's what we pay for workers' compensation. If we weren't in that, one, the alternative would be the state fund premium, and you can see what that difference is. So it's generated savings over time that have been significant. But one of the things we're struggling with as a consortium right now is that there have been a number recently, in recent years, of law and benefit changes. So the, the weekly benefit to which you're, the maximum weekly benefit to which you're entitled began to rise. It had been set at about $400 for quite a long time, and in 2007, it began to rise, and currently, it's $803. So it's a little more than double. They've also updated the fee provider schedule. That's an increased cost for those doctors and, and other service providers who do, who do healthcare for the workers' compensation individuals who are claiming workers' compensation. And this gets technical fast. I am not a, I'm not an expert in this area, but there's been changes, increases, really, in the benefit for non-scheduled permanent cases. So if you become injured, you might get a schedule award. There's a schedule for loss of use of something. For non-scheduled but permanent cases, there's been an increase in benefit in 2012, and as of '14, old and reopened cases used to be able to be transferred to a special fund in New York State that everyone paid into. That's been done away with. The consortium will continue to own that liability. So what's that, what's that, what that has caused, and what has recently been brought to light, is that we need to revisit the, the reserve levels of many of our old cases. So as a consortium, there are approximately 115 old, older cases that, that need to be reexamined. They might need reserve adjustments. So there needs to be money set aside for the payment of those benefits. Perhaps there, it's a permanent disability or a permanent partial disability over time. We're looking at 115 cases with an estimated charge to the plan of about $11 million. So that's at the high end. That's the high end of the estimate, and we haven't completed the work of working through those 115 cases. But it's important that that be done, because the plan needs to stay solvent and, and should recognize what the outstanding liability is. So I'm just alerting the board, because Penfield's share of that is approximately $653,000 based on our contributions to date. So in terms of next steps, this is really a piece of next steps. This is just foreshadowing to the Board of Education. The consortium's gonna continue, is continuing to work through that process. We'll take a look at the levels of reserve. We'll determine whether they're adequate. We'll come up with an action plan. But really, I think we should consider establishment of a workers' compensation reserve, which we're authorized to do as we approach the end of this school year. The maximum amount of it would be the $615,000. It would mean carving up our reserves in a slightly different way, but I think it's appropriate. I think it would be appropriate on our end, because it would reflect that potential liability to protect the district as we move forward, and I think it makes good sense. So I'm not prepared tonight for that recommendation, but I want to prepare you for the possibility of it. There'll be more to come as we move along. Are there any questions about that?
Thank you, Mark. Board members, questions, comments?
Thank you. And finally, my last update has to do with healthcare reform, because we're, I think all parts of our economy and of our society are continuing to work through this, and schools are no exception. So we are obligated as a large employer, large employers being employers with 100 or more full-time employees, that effective next year, we must offer medical insurance to all employees working an average of 30 or more hours per week. That doesn't mean, mean necessarily that we need to fund it, that there need, that we need to pay for it, but we need to make it available. We need to offer it. And the challenge there is that there are very significant penalties associated with that charge. So there, there, we are obligated to offer health insurance. We have to offer it, and it has to be affordable. And there are different penalties associated with both of those tests. So if you fail the failure to offer penalty, the, the potential penalty to us, to the employer, is $2,000 per benefit-eligible employee. That's $2,000 times per all of our employees. So if we miss the mark on failure to offer, it's sort of, that's the, that is a fairly cata, that is a catastrophic penalty. It is hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars to the, to the school district, so you can't miss that. The plan that you offer has to be affordable, which means that the, the single plan, the lowest option single plan, must equal less than 9.5% of the employee's household income. So the challenge that we faced as a consortium, as school districts, is how are we gonna, we have lo, most of our employees are covered by collective bargaining agreements and do not, and, and are eligible for insurance, and, and wouldn't therefore qualify, and there's no failure to offer. They already have the benefit. But there's lots of folks who work in our schools who might not be eligible, or they're either not covered by, by, by a collective bargaining agreement, they're not routine employees, coaches, substitute teachers, cafeteria workers, all those folks that are part-time employees throughout the, the school district may be eligible for a benefit if they work more than 30 hours. So the specter of that is the idea of tracking all of our employees. You've heard about this in the, in the news, you know, some significant local employers have made the decision, okay, no, but no part-time employer will, employee will work more than 30 hours. We're cutting everybody back to 26 hours or 25 hours. It's because of that requirement. As we've had the conversation without, with, as school districts in our consortium, so this is really a county-wide initiative, we've made the decision that instead of trying to track hours, instead of exposing districts to that risk, that what we would do would be offer what essentially is the lowest-level plan in healthcare, which is a bronze-level plan, to all employees at 100% employee-paid share at the 2015 open enrollment. So that's a base-level plan. The cost of that would be about $250 per month. That's estimated. Still a lot of work to be done, but it would be at 100% paid employee share. So the, the way that would work roughly would be at the next open enrollment, we would print out a, out of our payroll system, a, a listing of every employee who had gotten a paycheck in any way, shape, or form for the last year from the Penfield Central School District, and we would offer them this plan. If you want this, take it. You have to pay, and we'll have to design, you know, a means for that to happen. There'll have to be billing and so on. But if they take it, the cost to the district, other than the administrative cost, is nothing. It's borne by the employee. So that, by doing that, what we have, and then, from that moment forward, every employee at higher will be offered the opportunity for the plan. So there's one big mass mailing, if you will, and look back, and then everybody's offered it as you go forward. What that allows is for some efficiencies around how this works. We can be assured that we are exempt now from the failure to offer penalty. We offered it. We offered it to everybody. We'd be, we're exposed that someone might take it. And if they take it, and it, now, there's a lot of connecting dots here, but they would have to take it, they would then have to, or they would be offered it and refuse it, that's a, that's actually the more, the likely scenario, go to the exchange, choose an exchange plan, choose a subsidized exchange plan, and then have our plan be deemed non-affordable to them. In their family income, it's more than 9.5%. If all of those pieces align, Penfield Central School District would be eligible, would be required to pay the single $2,000 penalty. So that's the cost of that. As, as a consortium, we've had lots of conversation about that. We don't really know what that exposure is, but we don't believe it to be great. We'll see as we move forward through this. But the, the alternative to that is to try and design a system around the, the 30 hours and the tracking of those hours with the exposure of, you know, if you, if you miss that somehow, that you've exposed the district to an enormous penalty. So this recommendation is being fleshed out right now. There's a, a meet, a committee, a subcommittee meeting later this week. It's gonna be rolled out in, in conceptual form to the business officials and personnel directors later in the month. We'll continue to flesh it out, but I just wanted to give the board a heads-up that this is coming, that that's where this, as a county, we seem to be going with regard to healthcare reform, because I know we'd updated you some, it's almost a year ago now, and, and nothing's, you know, we haven't talked about it since. So you need to know where it is, and, and this is what's up. Any questions?
Mark, board members, questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
All right, this concludes superintendent's reports. Board members, we are on page four of your agenda. On the board business, our first item is facilities, and it's voting on the resolution for the Indian Landing seeker resolution. I am not going to read the whole resolution. I just want to remind you that the anticipated budget for this work is approximately $487,000, that Penfield Central School District is primarily responsible for determining whether an environmental impact statement is required under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulation of the Department of Environmental Conservation of the State of New York, and also that the board hereby declares itself lead agency to the extent necessary for this purpose under what is a type-two action. The text of the whole resolution is available in your agenda. And may I have a motion, please, that this resolution be approved?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All right, Marshall will have a roll call for the vote for this resolution.
Mrs. Rutan?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolf, Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dean?
Aye.
Mrs. Bebiers?
Aye.
Mr. Elledge?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mrs. Nasr?
Aye.
Thank you, you have seven in favor.
Thank you. Our second item is the Indian Landing Emergency Sewer Project Declaration and Appropriation of Contingent Expanse. Also, the details of this expense is in your agenda, and we've had a presentation by Mark regarding this, that the revised budget is based on an overall project cost of $487,000, and where that is coming from. You have the full text of the resolution in your agenda. And at this time, may I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approve this resolution as listed in your agenda?
So moved.
You, questions, comments? And again, our district clerk will call, will have a roll call for us.
Mrs. Rutan?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dean?
Aye.
Mrs. Bebiers?
Aye.
Mr. Elledge?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
And Mrs. Nasr?
Aye.
Thank you, you have seven in favor.
Thank you. We have no financial items this evening. Policy review. We have policies that are here for first reading. First one is 6551, Family Medical Leave Act, and then 5655, Energy Policy, 5420 procurement cards and credit accounts. And Catherine, or Camille?
Um, there's cover letters in the packet. So just to recap, for 5661, the policy update is explained in the attached cover letter. The Department of Labor has clarified employee requirements for the leave and expanded military caregiver leave and qualifying, I don't know how to pronounce this, exit, exit, leave something. I'm sorry, it's in the packet. But the updates are clear, and they're in the actual policy. And then for 5655, the energy policy, there's rationale in the cover letter, in the packet, which is a suggested policy based on a combination of very one BOSEs policy and Comptroller's guidance. And, Mark, I know you had some comments, which, if you would like to, we have time for that, and if not, we can move on. But let me ju, so let me just go to the next one, and then if you want to comment on that. The procurement of cards and the credit card, or the credit account, is to address the shortcomings of the previous language of the existing policy. So if you wanted to say anything about energy?
I would just limit it to the policy portion itself. And
Okay.
One thing that I saw, it's a good policy, and I think we do some of this, it's important that we try to partner with other organizations, you know, it's not just a district goal or a district benefit, it is a community benefit, even the larger community, and there are organizations that help fund these kinds of initiatives that, that conserve our, help us conserve our energy and our resources. I think as part of our policy, we should be seeking that out, not just endeavoring to do it, but endeavoring to find partners to help, help us be successful. And I'd like to see that in the policy. As far as in the, the other document, the, it's called the regulation document, those are all sort of mechanicals, which, which I think we can cover, and those are just details.
If I could, with the board's permission, Mr. McNiff's been very patient. If I could, with the board's permission, Mr. McNiff's been very patient tonight, and I'd like to give him the opportunity, because we've made some, with your permission, I know it's late, but a few minutes, we've made some pretty significant strides in terms of partnership and, and those changes, and I think it's worthy, I think your comment's worthy. We, both Alan and I agree, I think with regard to the suggested changes, we can work that out between now and the second reading. But I would like, I think, I think it's appropriate to take a few minutes to talk about exactly that, those partnerships and those opportunities that Mr. McNiff's been able to work through.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the brief moment of time. I'll try to be quick, but Mark brings up a very interesting point of developing those relationships. One of those relationships, we've talked about briefly at a previous board meeting with regards to our demand response, which hopefully is a good partnership to start development of the idea of conserving, getting the knowledge out there to faculty and the staff through that program of implementation at those particular buildings, and also what we kind of benefit from that, with the software that gives us the data that we can make, make daily adjustments, things of that nature, but also potentially some of the funding that we can get back from that program. The other more, I say more important with regards to funding aspects is the NYSERTA rebates that are available, as well as RG&E rebates that are available, very similar programs that are out there that we have the ability to go after both of them because we, we pay the SEC fee through our bill every month. So let's try to get something back from it, it's kind of my aspect of it. So there's a couple initiatives, since the, the initial drafting of this, when I did this in the fall, that I wanted to look at some of those opportunities we could potentially do, either alongside with our current capital projects or projects that we do internally. So a couple of them, just to point out kind of where I'm headed with this, just to start from, is the Bay Trail Gymnasium Lighting. We have an opportunity to buy LED light fixtures and potentially get almost half the cost back through a rebate program. And that cost, the net cost potentially will pay for itself in about, almost a little under two years. So it kind of gives you kind of one, that's one, one little aspect. Another one that I'm doing internally as well is the possibility of replacing all of the exterior wall pack lighting, security lighting throughout, throughout the buildings. We've seen a lot of the, what we call the low-pressure sodiums, or the orange colors. First of all, they don't give you the light level that you need, that we really want to have in our facilities. The energy consumption is obviously much higher. So we have the potential to buy those fixtures and get significant rebates back on those that almost pay for themselves. So those are the type of things that I'm trying to look at, going down the load, going down the line here, they keep changing those programs a little bit at a time. You'll, we're finding that LED fixtures are becoming a little bit more integrated into those programs, little by little. There are programs that are, that they do through a custom measure, which is what I'm looking for on the Bay Trail lighting system. Currently, the light fixtures there are on our pre-qualified list, we go through a custom application process, which is a little bit more paperwork, but it's worth that to try to get that net back to us. So those are a couple of the other opportunities that we're looking at right now, and continuing to look at them in the future.
All right, thank you, Alan. Any questions?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for bringing those up, and I think it points out that we don't wait for a policy to do these kinds of things. They make sense and what we should be doing. Then by putting it into policy, it really does drive that, this is, that we do want to work with a larger organization, and this is something that's important to us, not just to work alone, but to try to work with others and help others help fund us, because as we saw, funding is a big part of our challenge. So thank you.
Absolutely. Great.
Thank you, Mark. Any additional questions or comments? All right, thank you, and thank you for staying so late.
No, no problem. Thank you for the opportunity.
To answer our questions. All right, so these policies are here for first reading, and they will be back, you know, to be adopted at future meetings. They will be available on the website for the community, and if there's any feedback about them for us. Approval of the strategic plan and goals for 2014. We've had presentations in previous meetings regarding the goals for 2014. At this time, we need to adopt them formally. So may I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approves the 2014 strategic plan and goals? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed, thank you. President's remark, I'll be as quick as I can. Meet the candidate night was last week. I want to thank the candidates for being there, definitely, but also the people from the community who attended, asked questions, and the HSAs and PTA for hosting that evening. It's always a very important evening. While we know that the attendance can be very low, people, we know, also take the opportunity to listen to it or watch it on the web. It is now available on our website in, to the left, I think, of, of the screen. You can see a little link there and you can watch the whole evening if you are so inclined to learn a little bit more about our candidates. I had the pleasure last week of attending an MCSBA presentation with Dr. Grimm where Patty presented beautifully regarding his negotiations and really educating other school districts about the basics of negotiations. So thank you for representing us so well. And last thing is, I forwarded to you an email regarding the Fourth of July. The town is actually celebrating this year on the Fourth of July, and, you know, they have asked, like they do every year, if we are interested in participating in this parade, you know, so I would ask that if you please go, look at your calendars, decide if that's something you want to do. It doesn't have to be the whole board, could be one board member, could be the whole board, whatever you'd like to do, let us know. We'll talk about it, you know, and definitely need to have an answer for the town by the first week of June, I want to say. All right, so we'll talk about this at the next meeting, but I wanted to remind you of this, and that's it for the president's remarks. We have no unfinished business that I know of. And John, I didn't think you had legislative updates. Thank you. So at this time, may I have a motion, please, that the meeting be adjourned at 9:50 PM? Questions, comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed, thank you.